Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this council meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence.
In our moment of silence, Mr. President and all council members, let us remember the Orlando police officer that was just shot and killed in line to do. Also, the victims from the Fort Lauderdale airport attack also.
Thank you. Please throw us your Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, please take roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilperson Boyd?
Here.
Councilperson Denka?
Here.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Here.
Councilperson Riley?
Here.
Councilperson Denka, or pardon me, Councilperson Delos?
Here.
Council President Katina?
Here.
Mayor Chris Dinkin?
Here.
We have him.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on any of the listed motions this evening? If there is, please step forward, state your name and address, and please kindly keep your comments within three minutes' limits. Seeing none, we'll begin with the administration. Councilperson Boyd?
Thank you, Council President Katina. Motion to appoint the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette as the borough's designated newspaper for advertising purposes.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve Carnegie Borough Resolution 2017-01, continuing Resolution 18 of 2012, setting fees within the borough of Carnegie.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the partial minutes from the council meeting on December 12th and December 17th, 2016.
Second.
December 27th, 2016.
December 27th, there you go, thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, there is just a note that there was technical difficulties and that's why we have some some partial minutes recorded for that, for the for the one meeting, and that'll be rectified once we review the videotape and reconstruct the minutes themselves.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to appoint council member Michael Sarsfield as a primary delegate to the Char West Council of Governments.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any comment? Seeing no comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to appoint council member Stacy Riley as an alternate delegate to the Char West Council of Governments.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to appoint Mr. John Duran to the vacancy board for the year 2017.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilperson Boyd. Vaiance, Councilperson Denka?
Motion to approve the January bill list and bill list addendum as amended.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just that there was a B on there that was in there as quarterly and had to be amended to three times a year.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please, Steve.
Councilperson Boyd?
Yes.
Councilperson Raden?
Yes.
Councilperson Denka?
Yes.
Councilperson Delos?
Yes.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Council President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Other corps, Councilperson Delos?
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to approve payment application number three to Insight Pipe Contracting LLC in the amount of $52,956.94 for work completed between November 1st, December 23rd, 2016, for the 2016 store and sanitary sewer facilities improvements contract number 2016-03B.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, this closes out the ABC contract work from last year. This is the last one.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call vote, please, Steve.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilperson Delos?
Yes.
Councilperson Denka?
Yes.
Councilperson Boyd?
Yes.
Councilperson Raden?
Yes.
Council President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adopt Borough Ordinance Number 2442, an ordinance of the Borough Carnegie-Allegany Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 18, Part 6 of the Borough Code of Ordinance relating to sewers and sewage disposal.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, the Alka-Sand has increased their rates again this year pretty substantially, 11% increase in their fee. We did lower the Carnegie portion of the bill slightly, not enough to make up for that big increase from Alka-Sand. The former rate was $13.03 for every thousand gallons of water used. The new rate will be $13.052 for every thousand gallons of water used. So for a person who has about a $50 a month sewer bill, you'll be looking at about a $2.50 increase each month. So increase on the Alka-Sand side and a decrease on the Carnegie portion, which we use to do our sewer repairs. That's all I have, Mr. President, on that.
I believe this is actually the third year that we've increased the sewer rate.
Yes. Last year, we were able to decrease the Carnegie portion to make up entirely for the Alka-Sand increase, but this year it was just too much. We decreased our side 3%, but they increased theirs 11%. So the consumer is still going to see an increase.
Thank you. I believe we've done three years at this point. First year, we did it one year, and then we missed a year, and then last year, and then this year. Let's see, that's not many more calls. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to advertise the 2017 pavement maintenance program contingent upon finalization of road paving list. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to advertise the 2017 ABC sewer contract for continuing descent order sewer repairs.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to authorize KLAH engineers to advertise and bid for the 2017 Plum Street Stormwater Improvement Project.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to authorize KLAH engineers to advertise and bid the Greenbrier Drive Storm Sewer Improvements contingent upon the final plan approval.
Second.
Second. Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to authorize the purchase of a crack ceiling machine in the amount mod to exceed $10,000.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in, or actually, roll call vote on this one, Steve.
Councilperson Raden?
Yes.
Councilperson Boyd?
Yes.
Councilperson Denka?
Yes.
Councilperson Delos?
Yes.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Council President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public safety, we don't have anything this evening. Code enforcement and community development, Councilperson Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-02, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie approving the acquisition and subsequent disposition of a parcel of vacant property known as block and lot number 66-J-310-508 Dawson Avenue would be in accord with the comprehensive plan of the municipality.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We'll now have committee reports. Administration? Councilperson Smith?
The only thing I wanted to talk about this evening is the the teamwork that's been going on in the administrative department due to a long-term illness for one of the employees. The borough is a relatively lean operation. There's not that many employees here. When one person is absent for a day, it's not a big deal. But when somebody's off for a matter of weeks, then it becomes, you know, who's going to pick up the slack? And it seems that our borough manager, Steve, has by and large picked up an awful lot of the work himself. And he's got the folks that also work for him rallying behind the cause and picking up the slack. So it seems like we're in pretty good shape right now. And I just wanted to publicly thank everybody that works in the administrative team for for working as a team and getting all the work done. And thanks, Steve, publicly for working as hard as he has been working and wish him well on a few days off later this week. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Vaiance, Councilperson Denka? Thank you. Code enforcement and community development, Councilperson Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that we were successful in obtaining Phase III grant money from the DCNR for Carnegie Park in the amount of $200,000.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilperson Delos?
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, Councilperson Sarsfield?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report this evening. The managers' report?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Carnegie Normal Tier Fire Department EMS report?
I didn't get one. I'll double the report next month.
Okay. Thank you. The mayor's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. The report for the December numbers, criminal arrests and citations were seven. Parking tickets, number 94. Traffic citations were 30. Complaints and self-initiate activity were 960 by our department for the month of December. For the year, I'll give you some year-end numbers. I don't have all the full year-end figures in front of me. We're still waiting for some things to be input into this UCR system. But from the information I have, it looks like another very good year for the Carnegie Borough when it comes to crime and or the work of the Carnegie Police Department. For the year, complaints and self-initiate activity were up 4% this year. They numbered 11,868 complaints and self-initiate activity our police department handled throughout the year. That's up 423 from last year. Some interesting notes on some of the reports comparing last year to this year. Obviously, we had a much better traffic year. So non-reportable accidents were down 26% this year, which probably makes sense. And overall accidents were down, when you include reportable accidents, they were down about 14%. Actually, they were down about 15% throughout the whole year. So traffic complaints were also down 15%. But here are some of the areas that we received an increase in. And most of this make common, I mean, most of this is makes sense to everybody who's been around the borough all year long. Handling complaints handled by our department were up 14% this year. Ask anybody who lives next to a skunk, and they'll probably tell you what the complaints were for. Driving, parking complaints were up 13% this year. And this is something that is very alarming to me. Forgery and fraud, which, you know, isn't always what you think it is, but included in this does, is scams that are against our residents. But there's more than that than just scams. But including this is scams, and it is up significantly, 85% this year. Which last year, we were flat. So that, you know, that's something the chief and I will look into. What we can do on our end as far as education purposes. One of the reasons why I think it is up, though, that we have been trying to educate the public on every chance that we get that if you do receive a call that's strange, or someone knocking on your door that's strange, contact us immediately. And I think we are getting more of those contacts. So I think that is partly, you know, one of the reasons why it's up. But that's a huge increase and just shows, in my opinion, it's not totally indicative of this, but in my opinion, it shows that a lot of our seniors are being scammed regularly and they're vulnerable. And we need to make sure that we step up and make sure they know we're here for them. Protection, a couple of things that really bother me is the driving under the influence was up slightly. It's, I'm sorry, it's not up slightly, it's up. It went down last year 45%, and it went back up again this year 45%. So it's up significantly from last year, but probably more in line where it's been in the years in the past. Protection from abuse service, which is a call that we receive, and it's not necessarily means that we have to give protection from abuse, but it's just people who need information and provides, when we do have to provide protection for abuse within this, that's up 120%. So, you know, that's an area that we were, that was a concern last year that we talked to the DA about. And this year, I think we will continue to work with the DA and see what we can do education-wise to the property. Some of the best numbers are that the thefts are down 33%, burglaries are down 29%. And my favorite number, the number that I'm the most proud of with this department, is our use of force stayed flat with four incidents in the entire year. 12,000 calls, almost 12,000 calls, four incidents of use of force, and none of them were firearm-related. So, you know, to me, that shows that our department really understands how important it is to be community police officers. They understand the role of verbal de-escalation, and their arsenal, and I think we utilize that. And I think that's an absolute accommodation for our chief, who preaches that, and our sergeants, who also preach that. And these are individuals that know our neighborhood, know our individuals, and are able to to address most incidents without any use of force. So that, to me, is a real fantastic number, so. One of the biggest things that have affected communities across this Commonwealth, or across the nation, is the opioid heroin issue and the overdoses. Our number last year for the overdoses was seven. We had seven individuals that perished with overdoses. Our police are carrying Narcan now that, so if they do, if they are on a scene where someone is overdosed and they can administer it, they will. Our paramedics have been carrying it for quite a while. They trained us, so I commend our paramedics and thank them for that. And while that's not a good number, seven is a horrible number. When you compare that to what's happening in neighboring communities, it's, believe it or not, that's a positive number. And it's a shame that seven, that is a positive number, but it is a positive number. Speaking of that, Senator Fontana and Representative Deese recently had a town hall for the opioid and heroin addiction, and it was a very good town hall with a lot of information. I was able to attend it. In attendance as their guests were Pennsylvania Attorney General, the Allegany County Department, the Allegany County District Attorney's Office, the Allegany County Sheriff's Office, a couple rehab centers, and the Allegany County Department of Health Services, and a number of individuals who have experienced this in their lives and gave testimonial during this, during this event. So I learned a lot, got a lot of information, shared it with the chief, and we will continue to do our best to drop that number as low as we possibly can for the next coming year. The Boys and Girls Club, the winter sports season is well on its way. There's less than 400, I mean, sorry, there's greater than 400 children in the basketball and hockey. So, and next year, they are, they are planning to use our hockey court, the deck hockey for a league. So that'll be a nice thing. They're going to use that for a summer spring league. Actually, former Mayor Hyright is one of the people leading that up, so. And speaking of our park, right next to our park is the mini golf that a lot of people have had fond memories of for years. And I've been working with them since September on getting the mini golf open, and it looks like there will be a spring opening with the mini golf and the concession stand there. So right now, we're looking for a spring opening. Anybody who knows anything about the property knows that Mrs. Clay is now the, I think, the sole owner of the property. But her granddaughter has come back to stay with her granddaughter and her husband. And they're going to open the course. They have two children, and their one child is a kindergartner at Carnegie Elementary. And they're wonderful people, and I'm looking forward to helping them get that open and get it up and get people there to relive their childhood. This, and I see Maggie's in there, but I also have there this Saturday is the library's second Saturday Civil War lecture. They're usually well-attended. I've been to a number of them. I think it's a, if you, if you really like, I'm not saying like, if you're an aficionado of Civil War history, these lectures are for you. They're real good. And Diane Kleinfeldt does an excellent job with us.
Good speakers.
Yeah. Boys and Girls Trivia Night. We have a trivia night in February. We had a date set. They had to reschedule the date due to a conflict. So it looks like we're looking at February 25th right now. And we'll get that out, we'll ask the, put that on the website. Teams of 10 at $25 apiece and $250 apiece will compete for trivia, King and Queen of Carnegie. So sounds like a fun event. No, it's for adults. It's, because beer setups are included. Hopefully, it's all adults. And then, and that's all.
Are you going to mention the February 4th?
I was going to.
Good. Nope.
So thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Delos, I believe you have a motion?
Yes. At this time, I move that council reorganize.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, although this past year was not an election year for the municipality, we need to do a reorganization at this time because we are losing one of our officers of council. And so we need to take some steps to fill those big shoes.
Thank you. Stacy, or Councilperson Riley, I believe you have a motion?
Yes.
Oh, did we, I'm sorry. Yeah. All those in favor of reorganizing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Motion carries. Councilperson Riley, I believe you now have a motion.
Motion to nominate Sue Denka as president of council.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Madam Vice President, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Madam President. You want to come over? Yeah, sure is now. Councilman Delos, I believe you have another motion?
A motion to nominate Phil Boyd as vice president of council.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? I assume you would accept this bill?
I accept it, yes.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. And then, Councilman Delos, I believe you have another motion?
Motion to accept the resignation.
Yes, I have another reservation.
He did, he tendered the motion.
I tendered it to the president, the vice president, and the borough manager already.
Being that the council President Katina has tendered his resignation, I move to accept the resignation of Patrick Katina from Carnegie Council.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying...
Should we discuss you?
I mean, if you want...
You have to learn all these things.
If you want, it's up to you. You're the president, actually.
Okay, well, Pat, Mike, would you like to say anything?
Yeah. Pat has been a great asset to the borough and to me personally. A lot of times, you do the store duty up there, and you talk about, you know, even beyond, beyond this, you build a friendship, truly. You know, I'm proud to say that Pat is a mayor and dear friend of me. He's got a huge heart. And, you know, in the early years, there was a lot of infighting and a lot of challenges beyond the everyday duties of council. You know, when Pat and we both got here, we became, we become able to operate on stable ground. But for years, we couldn't find money. We had a plan for the park, and looking at the plan, it looked great, looked more of a small paper. But we didn't get it to put into action. But Pat's outdone, he's great at finances. Every once in a while, you can do your taxes or straighten out your finances, call this guy up, he'll get it all figured out for you. But Pat was able to find money, and you look at the park today, you know, as far as the different instruments that are up there for the kids. You look back to the elementary school, and about the kids involved with that. So, I mean, I could go on and on. Certainly, five or 10 minutes isn't enough, but I want to express my deep thanks and my gratitude. You know, again, Pat is just great to have, more like a brother. I mean, and many times, personally, me and you on council, Pat has been there, and I've assured him that each and every day, if he needed anything, whatever time, day or night, that I've always been there for him. He's a good man, and I wish him the best, and God bless him.
Thank you.
Pat Katina and I ran for council together seven years ago, and again, three years ago. And I didn't really know Pat before then, but we've become very good friends since then. I'm sure it's a friendship that will last long after our time in council is over. And we're going to miss his leadership here, there's no question about it. He'll be very competent as president, but everybody here knows what Pat does and how well he does it. We'll miss him.
Well, I only had a year to work with Pat, so it was short, but worth it. And I wish you nothing but success in your future endeavors and path in life. This is just one chapter closing and another on the beginning.
Are you still here? Oh, hey, Pat, don't worry. Not to add layer upon layer, but I would like to publicly thank Pat for making himself available, answering the phone, no matter how little the question was, or no matter how big the question was. Especially if I was hot under the collar at the moment, he had a way of rationalizing things and helping to potentially bring me back to square one, if you will, in certain cases. Appreciate you making yourself available very, very much, Pat. Appreciate your leadership as well. as well. Thank you, sir.
And I'd just like to say that, Pat, you better change your phone number. Turn your phone off, you're like, I'm sure I'm gonna be calling. Pat, with finance, I mean, I, I don't think we've ever had anybody on council that was as good at finances as Pat has been. And it's been an honor to serve with him for these last eight years. And good luck, Pat, with everything, and thank you. We'll miss you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I just want to say good luck to you too, and, you know, appreciate working with you. It was, it was enjoyable at times, and at times also enjoyed it, but, but we, I think we all had the same motives, so I wish you absolutely the best of luck in the future, especially, you know, a lot of us have an idea what the future holds for you, so that's exciting.
Thank you.
So good luck with all that.
Thank you very much. I, I, I worried, I was gonna say my comments, actually, until General Public Welfare, but I just have a few comments to make. On a night not so different from tonight, I remember officially being sworn in for my first official term. That same night, I finally achieved what I started back in 1995. Nineteen ninety-five, for those of you that don't know, was the first time I ran for public office. I was in my twenties back then. Lost by a handful of votes. That's why Carnegie still had a democratic machine, and if you bucked the machine, you didn't win. But eight years ago, I guess, I knew that night when I was being sworn in right there that I knew I was now going to be part of the decision-making process to make Carnegie a little bit better, or make the wrong decisions and make Carnegie a little bit worse. But needless to say, I've made a fair share of both good and bad decisions. I think the good decisions outweigh the bad. Hiring Chief Jeffrey Kennedy, Borough Manager Steven Buter, bringing back our thirteenth police officer, if we ever get there one day. Supporting the fire department, hire an additional part-time code officer, infrastructure improvements within the borough, three successful grant submissions for Carnegie Park over an eight-year time period, green parking lots, technological upgrades within the borough, and of course, the one I prized off, increased funding for our library with a long-term viability now for the, for our library. And I'm always quite proud to say that I leave Carnegie a little bit better off than when I inherited. When I inherited, we had about three-hundred thousand dollars in the bank in our surplus account. Well, this year alone, for what we turned over from this year to last year, it's three-hundred and five thousand dollar surplus, actually. So we did a lot right last year. Between all of the accounts within the borough, we've got close to five-hundred thousand now in the bank for this, for our emergency, for emergency purposes in case they come up. Over these eight years, the group you see sitting in front of me had the faith in me to allow me to lead them, and allowed me to be part of the good decisions. However, in reality, it wasn't me leading them, it was them leading me. When you have a great team around you, they make you look good, and better yet, make Carnegie look fantastic. I learned so much from each of them. As a team, council, the mayor, Joanne, the CCDC, Maggie, the library, our business owners, residents, and all of our various committees for planning, designing, the shanty, all working closely together from our start in Allegheny together a long, long, long time ago. We accomplished a lot in eight years, and we should be proud. If you have attended or listened to any of the politicians' goodbye speech, which one of the prerequisites is to go through that long, boring list of accomplishments while in office, not today. I would like to close by saying thank you to the residents of Carnegie, to allowing me to serve them for the past eight years. I thank council for being there for me, and I want to thank our marriage activist, for sharing the helm of leadership with me. We kept each other on our toes, as he said, and that is how government should be. Bold, passionate, dedicated individuals, willing to debate ideas to move the town forwards. Tonight, I can leave here knowing that we did just that. I wish you all much success, and no matter where my path may lead me, I will be sure to remember and remind others that all roads do in fact lead to Carnegie. Thank you very much, everyone. Councilman De Los, I believe you have one last motion to make this evening? Oh. I thought we did vote on it.
No, we were just doing our...
Okay. That's right. Time flies when you have a fight. All those in favor of accepting the resignation of myself? Yeah, that, so, why don't you carry the proper, you carry on the rest of the meetings. Do I officially turn it over to you?
Motion to accept the resignation of Pat Katina from Carnegie Council.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. No. Motion has been made in seconded and passed. Motion is...
Motion carries.
Sorry. Motion carries.
President, I move to advertise to fulfill the unexpired term of Patrick Katina. Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, you didn't ask for any comment, but I just wanted, the only comment I would like to say is, can you tell people how you're gonna advertise it so people know what you're looking for?
I, you need to officially advertise it, because it is required. I mean, I gotta officially advertise it.
And you'll find it on our website, and we're, we're gonna put it on the Facebook page as well.
And hopefully Carol.
I thought it. How long is your unexpired term?
One year.
One year.
This is an election year for council, actually.
Eleven months, really, I thought. He did, he did per, he did per...
Okay, do we have any general public comment?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
My chat.
Because you have to tell people, you have to be, and you have to live in War II, you can't live in War I, it's not for anybody in Carnegie. War II is the area by the school, behind the park, anything on this side of the creek.
Washington Avenue.
Yes.
Same street.
Right, anything on this, this side of the creek.
The other side of it.
Yeah, the other side, I mean, the other side of the creek.
Bet you know which side I meant. Everybody know which side I meant, though.
This whole side of the creek, yeah. My person.
That's my city.
So, yeah, it can only take applications from that, and you do have to be a Carnegie resident for at least one year.
I was gonna call.
No, no, I didn't mean...
That wasn't directed at you.
Thanks, Jack, I, I...
Yeah.
Now, is there any public comment? Anybody? Come on, next.
I, I think I'll start by saying thank you, Pat. I've been involved in your tenure here, and as you all set up here, he's also available to us as citizens, and I certainly hope that the community is beholden, as I am in terms of what you've done for the library, and as all of you have, but I know you need to play a role in that, and I wish you all the best. And, and I do just want to reiterate, it's been an extraordinary end of the year for the library. I hope you all, I think I sent to all of you the publicity on editorial in Post Gazette that was blown away, just commending the stance that Carnegie took on behalf of the library. And a couple of things coming up, Jack mentioned the second Saturday lecture. Phil, you're pleased to know that Chalo Fury is coming back. Phil mistakenly thought this was all him, I was a little disappointed. I think you all get, I think you're all on my nerves, so I won't, but they are performing on...
They used a different picture in my defense.
They used this picture, this was the picture, yes, he just saw the hair. Fantastic, classically trained, very edgy, they sound fabulous in our music hall, and it's the, Jack has corrected me on this, is what I think of as a bye weekend for all of football, but it isn't, it's the weekend when there's no football between the last playoff game and the Super Bowl, so it's a good time to say, hey, come out, and see here's some really fabulous music. I would also like to say, just because, there will be another meeting, but our really big event is the annual President's Day concert, where we do Lincoln Portrait, I think, and a lot of you have heard that, it's unbelievably moving and stirring, I think we'll all need it this year. Marian Hernandez is a renowned mete, so is our narrator, but she will sing a couple of Coop and Folk tunes, because I could run out of talent if she didn't. It should be wonderful. Pittsburgh Civic Orchestra, which used to be the Carnegie Symphony, is our orchestra this year. You know, you would have watched all of them, yeah.
Yeah, I have to say, when I was in high school, I used to go there to the music hall and listen to the Pittsburgh Civic Symphony.
You had thirteen old guys, right?
They're not watchable.
Yes. Well, I think they have a broader reach now than Rick and his, his permies, but I also wanted to say, on behalf of Rotary, Rotary is meeting in the Lincoln Gallery for the next three months, they usually meet at Nevillewood Country Club. And I guess there's enough snowbirds in Nevillewood that Country Club closes January through March, so the meetings are in the Lincoln Gallery, we're always liking to have guests, and I said, please, I mean, I'll send you all an email, we would love you to come, and the food is terrific. Samantha from Hungry for Time, who's on Third Avenue, I believe, I didn't even realize somebody referred her to me, she's a Carnegie career, terrific food. Just come there, you know, Rotary does so much here in Carnegie, so this is, I'll send you an email about that, but we'd love to have guests, and since it's not far for some retired folk, you can just come up the hill and have a terrific lunch with us, pretty much now through the end margin of a couple of sessions. I would like to know if you're coming, just so we know who are. Jack, of course, Steve, you should come, Jeff, you should come. Folks, if you're interested in Rotary, come, just let us know. Okay, that's it.
My question was, if you live on Third Street, is that, can you make a public comment?
Yeah.
Because I just wanted to, actually, it's, it's all positive, I just wanted to, why I had the opportunity for the President to, President Katina, to commend him for the job that he has done for the ten years he's been here, because I had an opportunity as a resident to, you know, just kind of see how Carnegie has changed, especially where I live at, they did a great job, and even Carnegie Park, and, you know, all the contributions that we received in our church and stuff, and I kind of know some of the members and stuff on the board personally, so I know, you know, I consider you guys a tent, really, and I'm not just talking about the head count, but I just want to, you know, have the opportunity to say that I believe that, you know, this, this group here, you know, even if you've been here one year, or eight years, or whatever, and even the police department, I think you guys do a really great job, and I'm, I'm a beneficiary of it, and I feel like I'm in a safe community. And, you know, I don't get up here to, you know, to be able to express myself that often, so I just took, you know, the advantage to do that, and I feel better myself, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Nice of you. Good comments. Anyone else?
Yeah, we have one.
Quite a lead-in by the Rotary, but I think every community can have a Rotary Alliance Club that belongs to the...
I'm, my name's Kirby Marchand, I'm resident of Northford Sales. I've been aligned for thirty-one years under the White Alliance Club. I'm also the second vice district governor of District 42B, which includes all of Allegheny County and thirty-five clubs. At one time, we had sixty-nine Lions Clubs in Allegheny County. We're down to thirty-five. We're trying to start a Lions Club in Carnegie. We started an effort last August, we also started an effort in Bridgeville, kind of decided to, Bridgeville seemed like it was moving faster, so we went and pushed the Bridgeville thing, but Bridgeville's actually running a charter night to start it, so we're ready to start trying formally, a Lions Club in Carnegie. There was one years ago, I could not find any information saying when it stopped me here, but I know it was originally chartered and...
I was actually remember.
Really? And when, when, we can't even remember when it stopped working.
Let's see, I, I left it probably in like ninety-six or so, but it kind of stumbled along a few more years, I think like ninety-eight was its last official year.
Actually, it got started in thirty-nine, so, you know, last fifty years. We would really like to get another one started. We plan during the next couple of weeks to start canvassing businesses, four members that we need, twenty members to start a Lions Club. Why Lions? Where there's a need, there's a line. Whenever Lions Clubs get together, problems get smaller, communities get better, it's because we help, or help is needed in our communities and around the world with unmatched integrity and energy. There's forty-six thousand clubs, one-point-four-plus million members in two-hundred-and-ten-plus countries and geographical areas. Hundred percent of donations go to help people. All the administrative costs of Lions International comes from land and paying dues, so if you give a dollar, that dollar goes to help someone. Charity Navigator rates Lions Club a ninety-four rating, five stars out of five, out of five stars. The Red Cross, that everybody knows, has an eighty-five rating, and they get four stars, so we're actually doing better than the Red Cross. This year, two thousand seventeen, is our hundredth anniversary. Lions Club International holds a seal on the United Nations, and we have four major charities aware, Youth, Conservation, Sike, and Hunger. What will Lions Club do for Carnegie? Whatever needs can be addressed through money or service. Eye care screenings, financial assistance, hearing aids, contributions to local charities, volunteer assistance in the community, we assist individuals, and disaster relief, if there's a disaster, we can get ten thousand dollars overnight to help start putting things up. We'd love to get members from any council, the audience, we'll, we'll take anybody, as long as they're twenty-one years old, actually eighteen, I think, not sure about that. Would love to get some support, ideas for recruiting, and Lions Club has a great website, it's lionsclub.org, there's all kinds of information on there about just things that are done around the world. My name's Kirby Marchand, like I said, I have my contact information on here, if anybody wants to get in touch with me. I have some pamphlets, if you want to grab a pamphlet before you leave. I would like to say that, I said we tried to get started in August, in August, I came down here in Carnegie with a couple other guys, and we went up and down the main street, went in businesses, I was truly impressed. I thought, what a nice community. I, I wasn't expecting it, you guys apparently reinvented yourselves, because I worked at the airport periodically, on the way home, if the Parkway was backed up, I'd end up kind of coming through Carnegie to try to get home, and I just don't remember the community being, and it's been a few years since I did that. I thought the community was really nice, I even made the comment to people, I think I'd like to move here. I, I mean, I was very impressed, you have a beautiful area, coffee shops, restaurants, nice stores, just very impressive. Thank you very much.
Can we have your number on here, correct?
Yeah. Give me a call.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman De Los. President. Councilman De Los. Council with the wall there.
Yeah, briefly, this past Christmas Eve is, I sat and flicked through the channels and had some liquid refreshments. I took the time to reflect on Officer Christian Shade, 69 years old, was killed in the line of duty on Christmas Eve, 1941. You know, and yeah, I kind of want to thank the mayor for, you know, bringing his name forward after so many years. And this year, we're going to work at getting his name placed on the fireplace memorial down here. But, yeah, I think about, you know, the past and present chiefs. Remember Chief Holtz being seriously injured, car accident. They were setting up a roadblock in Bridgeville. He was one of the last cars to pull in. A gentleman chose to run the roadblock and Chief Holtz was seriously injured in that. Chief Harmon, we all know, shot at. Fortunately, wasn't injured, survived that. Remember personally as a kid watching Chief Smith apprehend a burglar with nothing more than flashlights in, right on, right on Third Street. A guy was coming out of the beauty shop, broke in and Chief Smith attacked the mayor and held him until one of his officers could get there. Chief Kennedy going into a blazing house, fooling golf to save pets. You know, these guys do it, you know, for small time. You know, we have a great heritage here, but every day somewhere in America, another officer's being shot, abused, and it has to stop. Enough is enough. And, you know, so I ask all of you, your thoughts and your prayers and pray to God that keep our police here in Carnegie and the police across America safe as they go out to serve and protect us. Thank you.
Rick?
I have no comments, I think.
Stacy?
I just wanted to make an announcement that, for a little bit of background, Melissa Bowers was murdered on February 8, 2012, here in Carnegie by domestic violence from her ex-boyfriend. And her mother, Colleen, has organized, I think they used to mean do a ritual, and then last year started a fundraiser. So, they're doing the fundraiser again this year, and it is going to be on February 4 at Sephalo's right here in Carnegie. You can actually purchase tickets online for $20 or you can purchase them for $23 at the door. The, it's kind of twofold, so it's raising obviously money for Center for Victims and bringing awareness of the domestic violence to the community. There is entertainment, corned beef and curry, the wild geese, Steve Wellens, the power of two, Slim Foresight and the Turbosonics. But it'll be a very enjoyable evening. I know last year it was held at the bowling alley and it was, and it's for a great cause. So definitely spread the word and hopefully see you there. It's from 7.
I thought Curry was the venue.
No, but it's from 7 to 11.
Thank you. Bill?
Good evening this evening. Thank you very much, Council President.
I just have one quick thing. We have been, we've started, I guess, in October, trying to raise money to get lights for the baseball field at the Carnegie Park, a Toyota field, excuse me. And I just wanted to let everybody know that from on a trail, we put $2,800 into the fund so far. We have a long ways to go, I know. But the reason I'm bringing this up is we just had, we just sold tickets, lottery tickets, and I wanted to let you all know that we made $3,000 on the lottery tickets. So now we have $5,800 in our account. We've got a long ways to go, but we're working on it. That's it. That's all I have. Pat? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, here, second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.